I was, but I walked out, walked out.
Oh.
I'm logged in.
No, we're... We had to...
Testing, testing.
Had to replace equipment on an emergency basis today. Pardon me?
You do.
Okay.
It's not working.
Try keep, keep talking if you could, Jason, let's see if...
Okay, we'll give it another minute of trying and then we're gonna charge ahead and...
Testing, testing, testing. Testing, testing, one, two, three.
It is recording the mics in the room, though.
No, we have a different recording, though. We have a back, we have a backup recording.
We have our backup, okay.
Yeah, we need a transcrutable recording.
Well, that's really loud, that's really loud.
Hello, hello, hello?
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's, we'll use our alternate, our backup, we'll have an audio recording. There'll be no video.
Should we put in the chat, just tell everybody that?
Yeah. I think the chat's enabled.
Yeah.
Post a chat, so that, so...
You think the chat's working?
The, if they're logged into Zoom and I should be able to communicate with them...
Okay, why don't you try that and tell them we've had an equipment failure and there won't... The audio version of the meeting will be available tomorrow.
I tried, yeah.
Just giving Lisa a minute to see if she can get her chat working.
I can do it the old-fashioned way.
Yeah.
It's a bit backwards, though.
See if I can do it from here.
You're using your best handwriting, Mr. Adams?
I don't know where the chat is, it should be down here.
I think you have to go into the settings before the meeting and then you have the chat.
It's always been there, but I don't know.
We don't even have our video up.
Yeah, I learned to write it backwards.
See if I can do it this way.
Yeah, I have to take something out quickly and share it on the screen.
Charlie's...
The marvel of modern technology.
Yeah, they can see, so...
There you go. Good job, Charlie. Whatever it takes.
Okay. Mr. Thornborough, go ahead.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you. And tonight's presentation is fairly short on the amendments since the last meeting to the parking ordinance. First thing first, on page thirty-two, within the staff report, it discusses the data that's been supplied, that was requested, including the City of Eagles' alternative methods as well as information from Valley Regional Transit, the routes that serve Garden City, and they also provided some regional pass ridership. And the regional pass ridership that they provided is specifically when businesses or entities have provided passes to their employees and what that does for the ridership. There is a link on the very bottom of page thirty-two of that, the packet page thirty-two, within the staff report that does show the ridership by month for several of the past programs that they have. And then the changes that were made, the first change is eight-four-D-six-A-two-F-two, has been amended to require that residential parking must be within three hundred feet of the dwelling. And the reason that staff utilized three hundred feet is because that's what's in current, that's in current code. And parking for multifamily or group dwellings over ten units has been amended to one-point-six spaces per unit, plus a guest ratio of point-one after the first ten units. And the reason for that, that wasn't specifically addressed at the last meeting. However, there is a council member that has been reaching out to industry experts and has been provided that number as something that tends to work well. And so, related to that, staff did note that another item is that there's a breakdown of standard percentages of single-family, or not single-family, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, et cetera. And typically about forty percent of the units are dedicated to a one-bedroom. And so, at ten units, that's kind of where that break-even point would be, under those ratios. And in looking at previous applications within Garden City and what the requirement would be for parking, there are two multifamily projects that have been developed and are currently functioning, both of which just happen to have one-hundred-and-eight units. The first of which is Legacy Apartments off of Fiftieth Street at the River, and they provided one-hundred-and-eighty-nine spaces. And then Strawberry Glen is the other that provided two-hundred-and-thirty-nine spaces. And then, just to look at one that the city council's very familiar with would be the Sonder application. Initial code with staff applying the one per three-hundred for the residential, or non-residential component would have required forty, without the commercial, it was twenty-eight just for the residential component. But this code would have, would require thirty-seven units. And so, really looking at the Legacy Apartments, the one-point-seven, I'll call it the one-point-seven, is almost exactly what they provided in that particular application. And then Table eight-four-D-six, Equivalent Parking Adjustments, has been deleted in its entirety. And Section eight-four-S-D-six, Equivalent Parking Adjustments, has been slightly modified to ensure flexibility to allow for potential reductions. And staff does want to note that since the packet went out on page seventy-four of the ordinance in that eight-four-D-six Equivalent Parking, specifically B-one-A, staff would suggest that, should this be the direction that city council want to go in, that adding a couple of additional words would really assist in making the code a little bit more flexible. And to read that special conditions, including nature of operations, and then add "or site", and then et cetera, will read, that will reduce the demand of the site or preclude adequate parking on-site. And so, that gives the code some latitude that, say you have an existing building that's built clear out to zero lot lines, and even if they're remodeling, it may be arduous to require that there be a remodel to allow for the on-site parking. One other thing that I did want to note, under the multifamily table of... Is that it looks like staff has inadvertently removed the requirement for covered parking for multifamily. And staff did verify that that was in the February draft that came to city council, and it ended up somehow through the amendment process getting removed, and there wasn't any specific direction to do so. And so, that is an inadvertent, an unintentional deletion. And with that, I stand for any questions, directions, et cetera.
Okay, council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Thornborough, does the language that they have for parking adjustments, the way it's written, I was trying to decipher a little bit, if there is a project where a shared parking agreement might be useful, that language would allow them to do that, is that correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Jacobs, yes, instead of identifying exact circumstances, the parking adjustments would now allow for a parking study and circumstances to be identified with criteria for findings to be found. And then, yes, a shared parking agreement could be something that an applicant could presume. And there's a number of instances where staff could see that that may be something that would be requested. For example, if there is a large campus that has individual projects, or if you have an owner that has multiple properties within the city. Or an example like staff just brought up where staff suggested that there be a little bit more flexibility in the parking adjustments, that's not currently drafted, where you have zero lot lines built out, but there's available parking next door, and perhaps they could get a lease agreement with their next-door neighbor.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Example, that's Powder House.
Right.
Yeah, that leases parking from the funeral home next door, so... Okay. Other questions, council? What our goal is, is to, if you, if you agree with the changes as amended slightly this evening, we would bring back a clean draft of just the ordinance next time. And the council would have an opportunity to have a first reading at that time. Through that process, we'll have to have another public hearing on the final draft. So, we've noticed that up for the next meeting. And then, if, if, if the council's ready to have the public hearing that evening, great. If there's some circumstance that comes up, then we can postpone the hearing part and just get the first reading. Because of the lead time on the hearing notices, we have to anticipate certain things before the council's made a decision, which makes this a little difficult, because it's nothing worse than having people come down here and then we've changed something. So, but we're bound by our code, and we've got to make a decision on the hearing portion nineteen days ahead, which is before, you know, before we have a council meeting to go, gee, we're ready to go ahead. So, so our goal is to bring you a clean ordinance and, and hopefully be able to have our public, required public hearing on the ordinance itself at our next meeting. And the only potential modification of that would be if a circumstance arises that would make it more prudent to postpone the public hearing to the second reading. So, Councilmember Heller.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Thornborough, that your amendments or this next draft will include a restoration of the covered parking?
Mayor, Councilmember Heller, yes, unless directed otherwise tonight.
All right, good.
Okay. Any further questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
No, I don't have any questions, but I want to, again, thank staff and particularly all the effort and revisions that we've gone through and acknowledge all of the efforts and input from so much of the public, the residents, business owners, et cetera. I think it's been an incredible process, and I'm quite pleased with where we're landing. As a reminder, Mr. Mayor, I will not be here on the twenty-fourth, and I would like the opportunity to review the proposed code.
Will you be here the Wednesday before the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, we'll do our best to get a clean copy of this out as early as we can.
Thank you, and thank you for the comments. Mayor, one thing to note, we could certainly, or the, the hearing could certainly stay on the agenda with a continuance to a date certain, and we could notice the interested parties, if that's another option to look at tonight.
Well, we'll, we'll have an internal discussion and perhaps, Councilmember, I can talk to you offline about that, because this is a big deal, and if it looks like we can have a full council for the hearing part, that would be my preference, so... More to come, and we can, we can notify the interested parties easily enough and hopefully catch most, most people, so... Well, council, there really isn't a formalized decision I'm asking you to make tonight. I think you've, you've given, endorsed a direction based on your questions, so our next move will be to bring back a clean copy for consideration at the next meeting for a first hearing, our first reading. Okay?
Yes.
Perfect, well, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item G-two. This is in your packet. It's an authorization to buy seventeen police radios, as detailed in, in the packet. These are, what amount to a form of a mandate if we want to talk to everybody else in the emergency... If there are questions, Lieutenant Patterson's here that can answer them. The invoice attached kind of indicates the various components that make up a very expensive radio.
It's pretty straightforward, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
It sounds like the, a lot of the funding will become from some of the ARPA funds that we have.
Yes, this will consume most of the rest of our unallocated ARPA funds, but it won't, it won't be a direct impact on our approved budget. So with that, I'd entertain an action by the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we authorize you, as mayor, to enter into an agreement with Motorola Solutions to purchase seventeen police radios utilizing the American Relief Plan Act funding for a amount not to exceed ninety-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Second. A motion and a second? Got a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Here, another clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes. Thank you. Next item is another authorization for me to enter into an agreement with Great West Engineering. Uh, this item is on page one hundred in our packet. Uh, it's, uh, contingent upon urban renewal funding. Uh, are there questions of Mr. Schmidt? Okay, uh, it's a pleasure of the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move that we authorize you as mayor to enter into an agreement with Great West Engineering for engineering services for the replacement of a sewer main on Thirty-seventh Street for an amount not to exceed fifty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars pending approval of the Urban Renewal Agency Board on four-seventeen, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Here, another clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Thank you. Item G-four, um, another agreement, uh, for, uh, with Intermountain Playground for installation of rubber, rubber surfiting... Say that three times. Rubber surfacing at the Pamela J. Beaumont Riverfront Park. And this is on page one oh-seven in your packet, and again, this would be pending approval of the Urban Renewal Board, Agency Board. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So, Mr. Schmidt, does this put, um, rubber playground, oh, just where the playground equipment is, or is it more extensive than that?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember, uh, Jorgensen, yes. It, it's just where the playground equipment, uh, resides right now. There's a, a concrete, um, curbing around it, and that, this will go in place of the, the safety bark that's currently there. And, and you may have read in the, uh, the, uh, council agenda request that the moment that bark gets put in, the wind inevitably blows, and half of it ends up out in the street and the sewers, or in the, uh, storm drains, so this is one way of eliminating that, and the surface should last quite a long time. We'll, uh, we'll maintain it ourselves, so it should be a, a very nice product for that park, yeah.
Nice.
Thank you. Any further questions of staff? Okay, here and then, it's a pleasure of the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we authorize you as mayor to enter into an agreement with Intermountain Playground Co- Company for the, for the installation of rubber surfacing at the Pamela J. Beaumont Riverfront Park for an amount not to exceed one hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars pending approval of the Urban Renewal Agency Board on four-seventeen, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Here, another clerk call roll.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Thank you. Item G-five, ordinance, a second reading for ordinance one-zero-three-six-dash-twenty-three.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I believe we need to, a motion to read by title only?
Yes, unless you want to spend some time here.
I so move.
Okay, I've got a motion to read ordinance ten-thirty-six-twenty-three by title only. Do I have it? And I have a second, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, not all in favor, uh, clerk call roll, please.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Second reading ordinance ten-thirty-six-dash-twenty-three, an ordinance of the City of Garden City, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending Garden City Code Title Four, Public Health and Safety, Chapter Two, Municipal Refuge Collection, Section Two definitions, Section Three collections, service provided, use mandatory, Section Four rules and regulations, Section Five sanitation service fees, Section Six containers, Section Eight strong, storing, eliminating refuse, and Section Nine prohibited acts declared, eliminating Section eleven appeals and Section twelve violations, amending language, approving a summary of the ordinance, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Uh, we'll now go to item G-six, this is Resolution one-one-four-four-dash-twenty-three. This is a, um, Mr. Schmidt, now, we got, uh, our new camera van, and he wants to sell the old one, so...
Make some money.
Yeah.
Paying for a couple radios.
That, not much more than that, unfortunately. So, uh, are there any questions of Mr. Schmidt on, uh, regarding Resolution eleven forty-four-dash-twenty-three?
No.
Okay, here and then, it's a pleasure of the council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution one-one-four-four-dash-two-three relating to the surplus property, declaring certain property in the city to be surplus, authorizing direct and transfer of surplus property, providing for related matters, and providing an effective date.
And I second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on the motion? Here, another clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, that concludes the business on our agenda for this evening. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we stand adjourned.
Jason, you came down for an exciting meeting?